First, for the Raymore City Council Regular Meeting from Monday, April the 13th, the City Council Regular Meeting will be conducted virtually again with council members conferencing into City Hall. In accordance with the state of emergency declared by the Missouri Governor, Executive Order Number 5 and the Cass County Health Department Order 20-06 requiring shelter at home, the public will not be present. The public can view the meeting live by going to raymore.com/vide. The public can submit comments at any point during the meeting by emailing mr. mekey@raymore.com. And those comments will be read aloud at the public comments. And as you know, there's a couple of emergency ordinances on the agenda tonight. We generally allow the public to comment there, too, so there'll be a bit of a pause before we move between the first and second reads to allow for those comments if there are any. So, and that will be per Section 11, part of the agenda for the public comments as well. So we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdelewade.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Berenzin.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Serco.
Present.
Councilmember Holman.
Present.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Present.
Councilmember Townsend.
Present.
Mayor Turnbull.
Present.
We do have a quorum tonight. Would you all please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We'll now move into staff reports. Oh, no, wait, we have presentations tonight. So, I actually have two proclamations to give tonight. I will read those from my seat here at the podium tonight. The first one we'll go with is the Animal Control, Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week. So that proclamation reads, "Whereas when health and welfare of animals in the city of Raymore is at stake, animal control professionals are needed to ensure the safety and well-being of both domestic and wild animals. And whereas the safety of our citizens is dependent upon the skills of these professionals to assist the community in providing a disease-free, nuisance-free environment through enforcement and education. And whereas the animal control personnel of the Raymore Police Department often risk life and limb to protect the citizens and animals of this community. And whereas many animals, both domestic and wild, owe their lives to the unwavering efforts of animal control personnel that have rescued them from injury, disease, abuse, and starvation by providing necessary food, shelter, and medical attention. And whereas the animal control officers of the Raymore Police Department have contributed substantially to the overall safety of our community by demonstrating compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties. Now therefore I, Christopher P. Turnbull, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12th through 18th, 2020, as National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week in the City of Raymore in honor of the women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city, citizens, and animals safe. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand, cause to seal the City of Raymore to be affixed this 13th day of April, 2020." And I assume, Chief, on behalf of your Division of Animal Control, you'll accept this proclamation. We do appreciate the work that they do. You brought that program, and the ladies that work in that program have brought that just so much far forward than it had been in the past. We just, we really do appreciate the work that they do.
Thank you, sir.
And now, it gives me great pleasure to also provide a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I'd received communication earlier today from Eric Weinbrenner. He's the Public Safety Director for the Mid-America Regional Council, and expressing his sorrow in not being able to have the appreciation, celebration, and outstanding performance awards this year, a banquet that they normally do. It's one that the Mid-America Regional Council puts on, is very well-attended, it does celebrate the over 700-plus telecommunications that we have in the metro area here, and does put on a nice evening of dinner and entertainment. And unfortunately, in these crazy times, they weren't able to have that. And I'm sorry they can't have it either, because it's usually a pretty good time. I like to go to that myself, as the Director of the Emergency Services Board, to celebrate their efforts. But I would like to at least read this proclamation tonight. "Whereas when our community faces a crisis, whether on an individual level or on a massive scale, such as the COVID-19 pandemic currently impacting all of our lives, communications officers stand ready to respond. And whereas communications officers are first responders in the truest sense, but often go unheralded for the critical role they play in the success of any police, fire, or EMS call for service. And whereas public safety telecommunications must be available 24/7 as the critical first point of contact for citizens who are in crisis for a variety of reasons. And whereas public safety telecommunications are responsible for first responder safety by providing valuable information and monitoring their activities by radio. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of the Raymore Police Department contribute immeasurably to the safety of our community by demonstrating their care and concern each day in the professional performance of their duties. Now therefore I, Christopher P. Turnbull, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim the week of April 12th through April 18th, 2020, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Raymore in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand, and cause to seal the City of Raymore to be affixed this 13th day of April, 2020." Again, Chief, I know you're receiving this on their behalf. We appreciate the efforts of these men and women that do a wonderful job in keeping the rest of our first responders safe, that's for sure. Would you like to say anything to that?
No, just thank you for the recognition. I know that they would love to be here for this recognition because of the job that they do each and every day, but thank you for taking the time to recognize them.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we'll now move on to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, Your Honor. The staff report for Development Services that is in the council's packet is in its written form, of course. Mr. Catterett is not with us tonight. If you would have any questions relative to that report, we could answer that one. The monthly court report is also present in your packet this evening, council members. Police and Emergency Management Report will be suspended for tonight due to the length of their report last week, and they were obviously going to be speaking to our recognized tonight, who we had the proclamations for, so because they cannot be here, we will be suspending that one. If the council has any questions on any of those, staff is ready to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay.
Final report from me. There will be a virtual City Council Work Session next Monday night, April 20th. There will be, at the present time, a single item on the agenda for the council, and that will be revisiting the 2020 GEO bond issue, having a discussion on the projects that were included first, see if the council is still on board with those, and then, of course, first reading to put that onto the ballot in, now, August, would be the following Monday night on April 27th. That concludes staff reports this evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Any questions of Mr. Fearborn? Hearing none, we'll move on to committee, or we have no committee reports tonight. So we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda, the council minutes from March 23rd, and the Johnston Drive Extension. I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented to include Item A, City Council Minutes from the March 23rd, 2020 meeting of the Raymore City Council, and the Johnston Drive Extension Project Acceptance and Final Payment.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber, second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdelewade.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin. Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Serco.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. We'll now move on to unfinished business. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3533 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3533 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Dexter's Plumbing and Excavating, LLC, for the Fire Hydrant Replacement Project, City Project Number 20-348-501, in the amount of $101,715, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
I move, sir, that we approve Bill 3533, Award of Contract, to Dexter's Plumbing and Excavating, for the Fire Hydrant Replacement Project.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I will second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3533. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All, please have the roll call.
Councilmember Abdelewade.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin.
Yes.
Councilmember Burke.
You're up, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Serco.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Now move on to new business. Nope, nope, we still have a second item under old business. We haven't gotten through it that quick, sorry about that. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3538 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3538 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, updating and amending the city's administrative policy manual.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve Bill 3538, the amendment to the employee residency mileage radius.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
I will second.
Mr. Barber seconds that motion. There's a motion and a second on that. Is there a, any further discussion? Hearing none, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Abdelewade.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin.
Yes.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Serco.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries seven yes, one no. Now we'll move on to new business. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3540 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3540 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Terry Snelling Construction, Inc., for the 2020 curb replacement project, City Project Number 20-349-201, in the amount of $595,420, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bids were received for the 2020 curb project on March 19th, 2020. The low bidder and determined best bidder for this particular project is Terry Snelling Construction, Incorporated, with a bid of $595,420. Terry Snelling Construction is the lowest and best bidder. Staff recommends that the contract for the 2020 curb project be awarded to Terry Snelling in the amount of $595,420. The city council will note that in the 2020 CIP, there is $700,000 budgeted for this particular project. The additional $105,000, staff is proposing, at the back of this particular agenda item, you will see the curb replacement program, original map for this work to be done, divided into Zone 1 and Zone 2. With the additional $105,000, staff is proposing additional miles be done, particularly on two roads. In Zone 2, in the top left map, on the last page of this agenda item in the packet, you will see that West Pelham Path has been added in Zone 2, and you will see that in Zone 1, Willow Brick Drive has been added. Those are going to be the next two items in next year's curb program according to the grading that was done this year and the rating system that we use for the curbs. That concludes staff report at this time, sir.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
I'm in favor of the additional work being done, as mentioned by Mr. Fearborn. Does that require any change, Mr. Fearborn or Mr. Zer, in how a motion should be worked?
It would not, sir, because these, this year's and next year's were actually approved by the city council in that order at work session to be brought to you now. It would just simply be a question of, city manager is allowed to make change orders within budget limitations.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anyone else? So no further questions, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve Bill 3540, Award of Contract, to Terry Snelling Construction, Incorporated, for the 2020 curb project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I will second.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3540. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdelewade.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin.
Yes.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Serco.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries eight yes, none, no opposed, so we'll now move on to next item. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3534 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3534 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., for the I-49 Build Grant Project, City Project Number 20-002, in the amount of $176,214, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. Staff in cooperation with the City of Belton and Cass County is pursuing an application to the Federal Highway Administration for a Build Better Utilization Investments to Leverage Development grant from the Federal Highway Administration for the widening of I-49 from 155th Street to North Cass Parkway. Staff is recommending the engagement of an outside consultant to gather necessary data, prepare a cost-benefit analysis, and other items to produce additional economic information. In accordance with city's purchasing policy, a request for qualifications was issued to firms. The following firms submitted a response to our request for qualifications, HDR Engineers and Wilson &amp; Company. Staff reviewed the qualifications submitted by these firms and recommended award of the I-49 Build Grant proposal to HDR Engineers. HDR is further qualified for this particular project, as the mayor knows, because they have been doing all of the outer belt work consulting for Belton, which will actually be folded into this particular project, so they were ideally suited to take on this additional work for the widening of I-49. That concludes staff report at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of staff? Mr. Burke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question, if we are doing traffic counts in May, how will we get an accurate number on traffic when so many people are not working and driving?
That is being taken into account, but this particular, you have to remember, this one's out on I-49, and that's a small part of what HDR is going to be engaged in. With any luck, by the time they complete their study, that highway will be back open. And we're actually realizing that internally in the city. The council will remember that we did the 58 Highway and Dean Avenue Traffic Study. That particular one has actually been suspended because of the dramatic change in the traffic counts. We're hoping that the great amount of work that has to be done on the front end of this one will then allow for the traffic counts once traffic is back up to normal.
Thank you. I was just concerned, because one set of numbers will matriculate through the rest of the numbers, and engineers are going to need those to give us the best grant that we can have. So, thank you for your answer.
No, that's an excellent question. I was going to follow up on that. Will we be able to provide them with past history traffic counts from both of the cities that might help shed a little bit light on how this virus situation has affected the traffic count?
They'd actually taken, they had, again, they had been working with Belton on their side of the highway, so they have those initial traffic counts as is, but you want them to be accurate throughout the entire study.
Okay, alright.
We also, I would add, probably for a later agenda item here, because the next two items are also emergency reads like this one, that takes us all the way through it, but we have heard from the federal government that in spite of the short timeframe that was originally in place for this particular item, they are strongly encouraging us to get this build grant in anyway. We actually don't know whether this build grant will be suspended for a period of time or what will happen, but they are saying for certain you want to get something in in this particular cycle.
Okay, alright, thank you, sir. Anyone else have any questions or comments? If not, here's where we'll pause for a little bit. Well, no, we're going to get the first reading vote on that. So I'd entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3534.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve Bill 3534, Award of Contract, Award of Contract, to HDR, Incorporated, as a build grant consultant.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3534. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I just want to take a moment to applaud Mr. Fearborn, city staff, and yourself for having the foresight of vision to bring this forward at this critical time. A pessimist might look at this and say, why are we spending money when we know coffers are going to be down in the near future, and we don't know what the future holds? But this is exactly the time that one has to look forward and plan for the future. And so I applaud all of you involved for your forward-thinking vision in this, and I am very much in support of it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Hearing none, could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdelewade.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin.
Yes.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Serco.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you. The first reading passes unanimously, and because I have deemed this an emergency read, I would go ahead and entertain, do we want to do the second read?
I would recommend second read and a pause for comments, sir.
Okay, alright, could I please have the second reading of Bill 34, or 3534 in its entirety?
The second reading of Bill 3534 in its entirety, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with HDR Engineering, Inc., for the I-49 Build Grant Project, City Project Number 20-002, in the amount of $176,214, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency. Whereas the city council finds the improvements are necessary and finds it to be in the best interest of public health, safety, and welfare, and whereas bids for the project were received on January 9, 2020, and whereas HDR Engineering has been determined to be the lowest and best bidder. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the City of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the city manager is directed to enter into a contract in the amount of $176,214 with HDR Engineering, Inc., for the I-49 Build Grant Project, attached as Exhibit A. Section 2, the city manager is authorized to approve change orders for this project within established budget constraints. Section 3, effective date, the effective date of approval of this ordinance shall be coincidental with the mayor's signature and attestation by the city clerk. Section 4, severability, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Section 5, emergency reading, in order to assure timely completion of this project, the mayor hereby authorizes the passage of this ordinance as an emergency bill. Duly read this first and second time this 13th day of April, 2020, by the following vote.
Thank you. So now, this is where we'll have the awkward pause for a couple of minutes for potential community input on this. If anybody would like to comment on this at this time, you may submit your comment or question to mr. mekey@mekey, that's M-E-K-E-Y, at raymore.com. That concludes our two-minute pause. Have you received anything, Mr. Mekey?
Nothing on this topic, sir.
Thank you. I would then entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading, or excuse me, the second reading of Bill 3534.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve Bill 3534, Award of Contract, to HDR, Incorporated, as the build grant consultant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3534. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdelewade.
Yes.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin.
Yes.
Councilmember Burke.
Yes.
Councilmember Serco.
Yes.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson.
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. We'll now move on to the first reading of Bill 3535 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3535 by title only, at an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative cost-sharing agreement with the City of Belton, Missouri, and Cass County, Missouri, for the I-49 Build Grant Project, City Project Number 20-002, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a staff report on this item?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to ask General Counsel Jonathan Zur to make the staff report on this item. For those of you council members, you probably can't see him, he's, Mr. Ekey is directly behind me, Mr. Zur is behind him, you can't see him back there. Jonathan, why don't you stand up for everybody? And on to Mr. Zur.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mayor, members of the council. Bill 3535 has been drafted in conjunction with the Build Grant Consultant Award that was just previously provided in Bill Number 3534. Under this arrangement, based upon cooperation between Cass County, the City of Belton, and the City of Raymore, we have put together the cost, Cooperative Cost Sharing Agreement that will allow for the $176,214 approved as part of the HDR Award in the prior bill, to be shared equally amongst each of the three governmental entities. Based upon the agreement, each entity will submit $65,000 as part of the coverage for this. The City of Raymore will basically be acting as the quarterback on this item under the terms of the agreement, so we will ultimately be entering into the contract with HDR and paying HDR. The cooperative agreement allows the City of Raymore to receive the funds from Cass County and the City of Belton. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, but otherwise, that would conclude staff report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, the staff? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve, or to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3535.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve Bill 3535, the cost-share agreement for the build grant consultant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, sir. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3535. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin? Councilmember Berenzin?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Serco?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. As it is deemed an emergency read, we'll ask for the second reading of Bill 3535 in its entirety.
The second reading of Bill 3535 in its entirety, at an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative cost-sharing agreement with the City of Belton, Missouri, and Cass County, Missouri, for the I-49 Build Grant Project, City Project Number 20-002, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency. Whereas, Article R 6, Section 16 of the Constitution of Missouri, provides that any municipality or political subdivision of the state may cooperate under contract to provide a common service as provided by law, and whereas Belton, Raymore, and Cass County all desire to facilitate traffic and transportation improvements along Interstate 49, transportation improvements, which is a major operational thoroughfare serving each of the parties, and will substantially benefit each, and whereas Raymore issued a request for qualifications, RFQ 20-002, seeking professional consulting to complete the build grant, and has identified HDR, Inc., HDR, as a qualified entity, and whereas the parties have agreed that Raymore should manage the contract with HDR for completion of the modeling slash writing, and whereas the proposal from HDR to complete the grant is estimated to be $176,214, the costs, and will be funded by each of the parties, contributing $65,000 to provide for any unseen additional costs. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the City of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the mayor is hereby directed to enter into a cooperative cost-sharing agreement with the City of Belton, Missouri, and Cass County, Missouri, for the I-49 Build Grant Project. Section 2, the mayor, city manager, and city clerk are hereby authorized to execute the contract attached as Exhibit A. Section 3, the city manager is authorized to approve change orders for this project within established budget constraints. Section 4, effective date, the effective date of approval of this ordinance shall be coincidental with the mayor's signature and attestation by the city clerk. Section 5, severability, if any section subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Section 6, emergency reading, in order to assure timely completion of this project, the mayor hereby authorizes the passage of this ordinance as an emergency bill. Duly read this first and second time this 13th day of April 2020 by the following vote.
As the previous bill was also an emergency read, we will now pause for public comment and pause for another two minutes to see if anyone contacts Mr. Ekey. Again, Mr. Ekey's email address is M-E-K-E-Y at raymore.com.
If I may make a comment to this, sir, while we're in the pause?
Sure.
For the council's information, one of the, you, you may remember it was a couple of work sessions ago that we actually brought all of these items to you, and especially the cost-share agreement that's before you for second reading right now. The reason for the delay was because, under normal circumstances, with an item like this, we want the other vendors to have signed off on it and approved it, or, in this case, the other, the municipal entity in the county to have signed off and approved it prior to you all saying it, since, as Mr. Zur put it, we're the quarterbacks on this item. Before this came to you for two readings this evening, we had in fact received approval from Belton by their city council, and the Cass County Commission has also approved this in their final read. So, it's all set for you all and teed up for this evening.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So, that concludes the two-minute pause. Mr. Ekey, have you received anything?
Have not, sir.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3535.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve Bill 3535, the cost-share agreement for the build grant consultant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Yes, Mr. Barber.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill 3535. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Serco?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Can I please have the first reading of Bill 3536 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3536 by title only, at an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing amendment to the fiscal year 2020 capital budget to provide funding for the I-49 Build Grant Project, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. Staff is recommending a budget amendment in the amount of $65,000 for the I-49 Build Grant Project. The budget amendment will be out of the capital fund, transportation fund, labeled transportation fund, I-49 build grant, currently budgeted in fiscal year 2020, zero dollars, amendment of $65,000, total for this particular project of $65,000. That concludes staff report on this item, sir.
Thank you. Any questions, the staff? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve Bill 3536, the budget amendment for the build grant consultant.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, sir. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3536. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Serco?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. As this is deemed an emergency read, can I please have the second reading of Bill 3536 in its entirety?
The second reading of Bill 3536 in its entirety, at an ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2020 capital budget to provide funding for the I-49 Build Grant Project, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency. Whereas, a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2020 capital budget is necessary to provide the fund, project funds. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the City of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Section 1, the city manager is directed to amend the fiscal year 2020 budget to fund the I-49 Build Grant Project as follows. Budget, transportation fund, I-49 build grant, budgeted fiscal year 2020, zero dollars, amendment, $65,000, change, $65,000. Section 2, effective date, the effective date of approval of this ordinance shall be coincidental with the mayor's signature and attestation by the city clerk. Section 3, severability, if any section subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portion shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Section 4, emergency reading, in order to assure timely completion of this project, the mayor hereby authorizes the passage of this ordinance as an emergency bill. Duly read this first and second time this 13th day of April 2020 by the following vote.
Again, as this is an emergency read, we will now pause for two minutes to allow for input. If somebody would, from the public would like to comment on this item, at this time, you may do so through mr. Ekey at M-E-K-E-Y at raymore.com. And we'll now pause for two minutes. Any more comment, Mr. Fearborn, to kill the time?
Thank you, sir. Big time killer here. For the council's information, if you look back at the last three emergency reads, you can probably tell which of the emergency reads was done by General Counsel Zur by the number of whereas clauses that are included in his compared to mine, which only had one, and Mr. Crass's, which I believe may have had three. He managed to double our number.
Poor Mr. Zur. He's even in the back of the class. One more minute. You're smiling, Mr. Ekey. One of the councilmen emailing you? So, that will conclude the time allotted for comment. Anything, Mr. Ekey?
No, sir.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3536.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman.
Sir, I move that we approve Bill 3536, a budget amendment for the build grant consultant.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I will second the motion.
Thank you, sir. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill 3536. Any further discussion? Hearing none, could I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Serco?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. That concludes new business. So, we'll now move into, well, we don't have public comment, so we'll now move into mayor-council communication. And as I see my screen tonight, I'll start from the bottom up. Ms. Abdalgawad, you are showing at the bottom of my screen here. Would you like to comment first tonight?
Just very briefly, I want to take a minute to thank the Public Safety Telecommunicators, our dispatchers. Of course, you all know that they are near and dear to my heart, taking care of my husband and all of the other officers on the road every day here in Raymore, as well as our firefighters. So, I just wanted to take a minute to thank them from the bottom of my heart for all the work that they do. It's a stressful, often underappreciated job, and so I wanted to take a minute to thank them, and of course, also thanks to all of our animal control crew. They do an awesome job every day as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't ready. I didn't think I was on the bottom. I wanted to say that I talked at length with Sherri Turney this week, who is at the Secretary for the Chamber of Commerce for Raymore, and she had a lot of great things to say about the city staff during this time, during the sheltered place, and as well as before, and she specifically, should Mr. David Gress favor the local business?
We caught most of that. Unfortunately, you were coming in and out. Sorry about that, but basically, it was about her complimenting city staff and, from the Chamber of Commerce and working with them.
Compliment to Mr. David Gress.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, sir.
And thanks, Google Fiber.
Thank you. Yeah. Alrighty then. Mr. Serco?
Okay, yes. Just a few quick things. The proclamations, of course, the safety telecommunicators. You know, when I went on the overnight run, even in the middle of the night, we'd stop back in, and the number of screens, the number of activities going on, the number of things they're doing, and trying to keep on every second, boom, 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 even in the middle of the night, it's just a busy, busy thing. And, you know, they are, the first two minutes calls come in, they have to get the right information, to the right resources, metro fire, ambulance, or police. So, yes, the proclamation is well-deserved. They do a tremendous job getting that information to the right people to get resources to the people who need it, who are on the emergency end of that. So, a good, a big thank you and appreciation to them. Our two fine ladies on animal control, I've dealt with them a number of times. They're always very busy. They do a great job. They give 120%. They give a hundred and twenty percent all the time, and, you know, and that's just speaks for who they are and how much they love their jobs. So that proclamation was another very big thumbs up. They deserve that proclamation also. And finally, I would just say that, speaking for myself, and I know I could be speaking for a number of people in South Sunset, we are very pleased that we'll have some new curves coming in on that street. Thank you very much, city. We appreciate it immensely. Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, and your, Mr. Gress, or actually, Mr. Crass, I'm assuming is on our works of streets and stuffs and curves also. But thank you, gentlemen, for that. Ladies, we appreciate that immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holman?
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of items. One, I wanted to say to all of the colleagues on the council and all of the staff, it is good to see you all, and it is good to see that everyone appears to be healthy at this time. I think that's something we occasionally take for granted in the past, but certainly not with what's going on right now. I was checking this morning, I checked the COVID-19 website, and I was seeing that the numbers for Cass County, at least as reflected this morning, I think were about thirty-one cases, which out of a population of over a hundred thousand would equate to about a point-three percent infection rate. I'm sure that's got to be lower than most of the spots, probably, certainly the hotspots in Missouri and the rest of the city. At least from an actuarial standpoint, that's, that's good news. It sounds like people are following the social distancing guidelines, at least to a certain degree, and we're seeing some results out of that. So that's some good news. And then just the final thing that I had, sir, I had discussions with Mr. Fearborn about this. I think he had brought it up to us in a, perhaps a memo or an email, but it is April thirteenth, and half of the council is currently serving past its regular term, but given the status of, of our country, of course, everyone knows that the election has been postponed until, I believe it's June second. And Mr. Fearborn assured me that those of us that are still serving past our term date are allowed to do so because of the emergency via the Missouri Constitution, which I know Mr. Zer researched exclusively and extensively for us. So thank you for that, sir. And I'm very, very proud of the council and of our staff and how are they performing in this, these most difficult of times. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. But thank you for reminding us of the, of the election and how that is progressing or, or the lack thereof, so to speak. So we'll move on to Mr. Berenzin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we take the time tonight to thank our telecommunications specialist, safety, I would ask our citizens to, let's give them a little bit of a break this year. This is the time of the year that we always see the usual uptick in crime. If you watch the police waters, you'll see that there are a lot of criminal opportunists out there, just lifting handles, looking for cars to get into. You know, we see it monthly, if not sometimes weekly, people are going through cars and just taking what's easy. And a lot of times they're taking firearms and things of that nature, too. So let's just be a little extra cautious, and let's make sure we try to lock our vehicles, double-check our garage doors and make sure they're closed at night, and look out for each other and our neighbors. I really would like to see us take a bite out of this every year and see this statistic decrease, and, and let's get ahead of the game and see if we can't, can't put a stop to some of that this year. So please lock your vehicles and make it a little easier for our safety telecommunicators. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. No, that's a good point, John, because we, the last two burglaries we've had have been crimes of opportunity where people let their garages open. And even in this time of social distancing, apparently the criminals aren't actually going along with that. So, but thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you, sir. First of all, it's an honor to be in the square next to you, at least on my screen here, so. Really, all I had to do is, I want to say I completely agree with Councilman Holman's remarks regarding the council and the city leadership. I was actually thinking, as I was considering our current environment today, a few weeks ago, sir, we gave you, we voted to give you the opportunity to provoke, to invoke emergency procedures within the county, and at that time, I, I wanted to make it clear, and if I did, I want to make it clear now, that were it anybody but yourself and Mr. Fearborn working with you and his staff, it would have been a little more of a challenging decision, but it was, it was not a problem at all. I know that you guys are dealing with this on an everyday basis. Everything is fluid. My guess is hour to hour, you're having to deal with decisions and, you know, which direction to go based on how things are going. And I want to thank yourself, sir, and Mr. Fearborn and the staff. I know it was probably not only challenging, but probably excruciating at sometimes with some of the decisions that you guys have to make, and I am extremely pleased that you got, yourself is in charge, and, and you've got an incredible staff like Mr. Fearborn's staff to help you. Also, at the same time, I want to pass my compliments on to the rest of the council. You know, it might be easy, as Mr. Holman was alluding to earlier, that maybe not be present for various reasons, and yet every council meeting, you know, that we're having to do virtually, if I recall every work session we've had, everybody's been present and accounted for, and in times like these, that's necessary. Even though I know there might be an emergency of some kind, family emergencies do arise, but everybody's making sure to be here. So, and then to add on to that, I do want to ask everybody to think about our first responders out there. They are in the forefront of all of this, and they're doing a fantastic job, and I hope they know that we all realize that and we're all thinking about it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to echo the comments of my colleagues and thank the animal control professionals as well as our communications officers, outstanding job that they do on behalf of the city. And also want to commend staff on the emergency bills that were read this evening and that were approved by the city council this evening. Just goes to show, those three bills are for areas that are outside of our city limits, outside of our jurisdiction, but it's on an area that's of concern from, specifically for our residents and the area and the region as a whole, and how our city staff has taken the lead, and as the, our city attorney has said, quarterbacking that particular effort. And I appreciate that because it's been something that has been of concern for everyone, but a priority of mine since I've been on the council and trying to work through the Mid-America Regional Council, and all that they do, even in this time of stay-at-home and, and everything is pretty much, economy is kind of at a stalemate, we're still finding an opportunity to put forth an effort in the cooperation amongst the cities and the county to make sure that we lean into this and continue the momentum, because as we, as this passes, as this too will pass, we'll be able to be better positioned and take advantage of the opportunity. So again, thank you to staff, and thank you to everyone that's in support, and supporting, as has been said numerous times, our first responders and all of our staff, who are still continuing to, to come into the office and still continue to get out to the community and do those things on behalf of the city. So again, thank you to everyone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mr. Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I too concur with everything that my colleagues have said. The proclamations tonight, two important components of our staff, both of them deal with public safety, and I'm glad they got recognized. Appreciate you, Mr. Mayor, reading those proclamations. And I do appreciate our entire city staff for still coming to work, being essential. City business is still going on. I'm not sure who's in charge of our virtual meetings. I assume Mr. Mayberry has a big part in that, and the meetings, if we, we're about on our fourth week, have gotten better and better. And I hate to say I told you so, but it wasn't very long ago when I said, hey, we need to have an opportunity to do a virtual meeting. There was a couple people just thought I was out of my mind. Now, I never thought this was going to happen, but I'm glad we've been able to do, conduct city business. Our city is still running. I appreciate staff for allowing us to be part of the meeting, and I do miss you guys. I put my briefcase by the back door to go, to go put in my truck to come to the meeting, and I realized I just had to come down to my office. So I still miss coming to City Hall. Hopefully soon we can get back together. But again, thank you. Thanks, everybody, again, for keeping Raymore going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. And I too want to thank the council for your cooperation and patience. I know this is a bit different, and sometimes you feel like you get a little constricted on what you can say and do in this virtual environment, but it is, it is, it does seem to be working out pretty well. The staff here is working diligently, as you said. We have our COVID meetings at eight forty-five every morning to get the updates from both the state and from the county, and the team here is just phenomenal. I mean, you've got Jim Fearborn, Mike Eke, the chief, Ryan Murdock, and Melissa Harmer, who are there in preparation for what's occurred over the past twenty-four hours and how we're moving forward, and just like Mr. Townsend said, how we're leaning forward to get the job done here on a daily basis, yet deal with this pandemic that's occurring in our city and try to minimize the effects on our citizenry. I mean, it, it is a difficult environment to work in, but the group up here is very dedicated, and I am very proud of them, and very proud to be a part of it as we move through these, these emergent times. To kind of give you an update, the most recent report, it came out this afternoon, we have forty-four infected people here in Cass County, and we've now lost four of our citizens. So I'd ask you to keep them and their families in your prayers and in your thoughts as we move forward. It is a, it's an unfortunate situation, in particular Meadowview, which is a rehabilitation and health facility down in Harrisonville, where many of the infected have, have been reported out of. In fact, they've lost two or three out of there now.
Three of the four, sir.
Three, three of the four that we've lost here in the county came from that particular facility. So they've, they've been hit extremely hard down there, and so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers as we move forward. And it was my honor to provide the proclamations to the ACOs and the, and the dispatchers tonight. I do recall being a rookie cop and being placed in dispatch when I was a police officer over in Raytown, and that's a tough job. And back then, it was a lot easier than it is today, a whole lot easier. And I, so I, I really commend them for the work that they do and how they continue to train and, and be ready for any emergencies that occur here. As you know, ours are emergency medical dispatchers, too, so they have to be prepared to, prepare people when they're calling in a medical emergency for the arrival of EMS or the fire. So their, their jobs are very tough, and so when we can recognize them at least this one time a year, it is always my honor to do so. And the ACOs, as I said earlier to the chief, have done a tremendous job in providing support for our no-kill facility, and there, it's just a, a great team of people up here that continue to work through a stressful environment. And you all do make it as a, as, as team members, and we believe that you are as our council members, team members, you do help provide us that input that, that keeps, keeps us moving forward. So thank you all for your support. Thank you for your patience with the setup tonight. Hopefully soon we'll be able to get back together, and, and I'm not sure we're going to be shaking hands anytime soon, but maybe we'll get to see each other in the same room. That's all I have tonight. I don't believe we have anything else on the agenda, so it entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Holman?
I, I would make a comment before I make the motion, sir. If one is bored, if one is down and wants to see hope for the future, go drive by TB Hannah Station and see the transformation that's taking place. It's amazing. I've been going by about every other day, and it's really coming along. It's going to be a great place in short order for all of our citizens to visit and enjoy. And having said that, I will move that we adjourn this April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, meeting of the Raymore City Council.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Barber.
Mr. Barber.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. Could I have the roll call?
Councilmember Abdalgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Berenzin?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Serco?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobson?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Thank you all. We're, we are